Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, March 23rd, Davidson County Board of Commissioner meeting. Thank you for being in attendance. Good to see you. I'll call the meeting to order and our clerk will conduct a roll call for the meeting.
Commissioner Elliott? I'm not seeing him in yet. Commissioner McClure? Is not in yet. Commissioner Shell?
Present.
Commissioner Shores?
Here.
Commissioner Trul?
Here.
Vice Chair Yates?
Here.
Chair Watford?
Here.
Thank you. Madam Chair, the only thing that we're gonna have is that Commissioner Elliott was supposed to do the invocation and pledge.
Okay.
Roll on Mr. Shell.
I'm gonna call Commissioner Shores to do the invocation and the pledge.
Let's bow our heads. Most heavenly gracious God, Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this time together. Lord, we ask that as we have come together to do the business of this county, Father, that you would give us the wisdom, the knowledge, and the courage, Father, to do the things that you would have us to do and in the way that you would have them to be done. Father, we just pray for our nation, we pray for our state, and, Lord, we pray for our local leaders. And we ask you, God, that whatever we may do tonight, that it would be in your name. Father, these things we ask in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome Julie Harshaw of the Lexington Chamber. Julie, are you in our audience? She may be watching online. She's a representative for the Council of Chambers. If you haven't registered for public address, please do so at this time. For the agenda, Mr. Smith has asked, Public Health COVID Staffing and Clinic Pay as Agenda Item 9E be added. Also, Mr. Leonard has requested that Agenda Item 8B, Item to Set for Public Hearing Rezoning Request by Hubbard Realty of Winston-Salem Incorporated to Rezone 445.19 acres in Tyro Township from RA1, RA2, and LI to MXR be pulled from the agenda. Are there any other changes for the agenda?
Motion to approve the amended agenda. Second, Madam Chair.
I have a motion from Commissioner Trul and a second from Commissioner Shores. We'll do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Elliott is still not in the meeting. Commissioner McClure is still not in the meeting. Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Shores?
Yes.
Commissioner Trul?
Yes.
Vice Chair Yates?
Yes.
Chair Watford?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries by a vote of 5-0.
Okay. Is anyone registered to speak?
No, ma'am, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. For public hearing, Project SEAL Economic Development Incentive Grant, Mr. Goodson has requested that this public hearing be continued till the April 13th meeting. May I have a motion in a second to continue this public hearing to April the 13th?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. We'll do a roll call vote again.
Commissioner Elliott is still not in. Neither is Commissioner McClure. Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Shores?
Yes.
Commissioner Trul?
Yes.
Vice Chair Yates?
Yes.
Chair Watford?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you. All right. Come on up, Mr. Crook. We have a rezoning request by Brad and Harrellan Grimsley in Conrad Hill Township containing 6.49 plus or minus acres from LI to RA3. I declare the public hearing open. Mr. Crook is getting settled in to introduce the application. Mr. Grimsley, are you here?
I'm here. Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one item on the agenda tonight for public hearing, and that is a request by James Bradley and Harrellan Proctor Grimsley to rezone property located in Conrad Hill Township, Tax Map 8, Lot 87A, containing 6.49 acres, more or less. Property is located to the south of Carter Road, approximately 1,600 feet west of the Cunningham Road intersection, directly behind property, addressed as 545 Carter Road. Rezoning is requested to change from that of LI Limited Industrial District to that of RA3 Rural Agricultural District. This property was zoned LI back in July of 1976. It operated for a little while as a sawmill. The Grimsleys now own it, and they wish to farm the property, and they want to rezone it to RA3. If it's the board's pleasure, I'd ask them to come up now.
Okay. Mr. Grimsley, will you come on up? Both of you are welcome to come if you want to. And will you explain this request?
Yeah, like he said, years ago, it used to be a sawmill back behind the property there. And then Mr. Hegy passed away, and it didn't never work no more. So it grew up, and I bought it, and I just wanna pasture it in for cows and stuff.
Okay.
That's the plans.
That's the plan. Okay. Any questions by the board?
No questions here.
Any questions? If y'all wanna sit here for just a minute, we might call you back up. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak either in favor of or opposition to this request? Looks like we're not gonna hear anything. Mr. Crook, what is the staff recommendation?
I've tendered my staff recommendation as part of the record. It's in your application. To briefly summarize it, it describes the property. It talks about the history with it being rezoned back in the '70s by Mr. Kay, and it speaks to support from the Land Development Plan Policy Statements 10.1, 10.2, 10.3, support the amendment, and the staff would recommend approval.
Any other additional discussion by the board? I declare the public hearing closed. Now have a motion in a second to either approve or deny the rezoning request after the expiration of the required 24-hour comment period and to adopt the resolution on statement of consistency.
Motion to approve, Madam Chair, on resolution on statement of consistency.
I have a motion?
Certainly.
A second. We'll do another roll call vote.
Commissioner Elliott has left Commissioner Shores' agency and will not be at the meeting this evening. So we'll come back and just remember that.
Okay, okay.
Commissioner McClure, I don't believe. Let me screen again. Is still not in the meeting. Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Shores?
Yes.
Commissioner Trul?
Yes.
Vice Chair Yates?
Yes.
Chair Watford?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Should there be any comments that come in within 24 hours following the meeting tonight, this item will be placed on the consent agenda along with comments for the April 13th meeting. Thank you all.
Madam Chairman, I apologize for interrupting, but previously, we didn't have any information about the status of Commissioner Elliott or Commissioner McClure. I wonder, in light of the information that had been received, whether it'd be appropriate this time for the board to consider a motion to excuse Commissioner Elliott.
Okay. Do I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Elliott?
I make a motion that we excuse Commissioner Elliott.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do you wanna do a roll call?
We can do that, ma'am.
Okay.
Commissioner McClure is still not on the line. Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Shores?
Yes.
Commissioner Trul?
Yes.
Vice Chair Yates?
Yes.
Chair Watford?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you. Okay. For deliberation or decision or consent, are there any items to remove from the consent agenda?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
With respect, I'd like to pull item K.
K, okay.
K.
Two short questions for our county attorney.
Okay, yes, sir.
I understand that they're not working for us now, right?
Forgive me, sir. Do you want to go ahead and speak with regard to the other matters on the consent agenda and then pull this as first deliberation item?
I'll make a motion. We approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
There you go.
With the pulling of item 8K.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
And we have a second. Commissioner Trul, do you want to do a roll call vote on them?
Yes, ma'am.
To approve.
Commissioner McClure is still not on the line. Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Shores?
Yes.
Commissioner Trul?
Yes.
Vice Chair Yates?
Yes.
Chair Watford?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. That motion carries by a vote of 5-0.
Go ahead, Commissioner Shell.
Okay. Just get to the point, Chuck.
Yes, sir.
The term of the agreement, the effective date, termination date, does that not need to be changed from March 1st to April 1st?
As a practical matter, it would not be able to start until such time as it had been executed by both of the parties. I think your point is well taken. It's not going to begin until it's been approved by this board and executed by the chairman on behalf of the county, yes.
And this month's already about over, isn't it?
Right, right.
If it were first month, I was talking about an oversight for that one.
Yes.
This is our contract that we agreed to.
Yes.
Okay. So are we good with?
I think if the motion is made, it may well be to have it effective from today's date rather than the date which is set out in the document.
It does allow for at the end, the comma, or until completion of, so at least they're not backed into that fifteenth if it takes longer to do that by not getting started, if that makes sense. Would that be easier for you, effective as of tomorrow versus effective as of April 1st? Are they gonna be doing anything for us between now and then? I think I may have to help us with that. Jane?
No, I mean, it's either 5 or 8 first.
April 1st, good with you, Jane?
Okay. If it's consistent with the board and with our county attorney, I would make the assumption that change will be implemented in that contract.
Okay.
And that would simply change the beginning date for the term that agreement shall commence on April 1, 2021, and we'll make that the effective date.
One more question, Chuck.
Yes, sir.
Go down to number 6, the last sentence of number 6. I think that's requiring something that we, the people, the entities that are listed there and that are not gonna be legally able to comply with, subject to the Freedom of Information Act, I think, where it says, no disclosure, subject to the Freedom of Information Act. I think that needs to be included in that paragraph.
I think I probably would wanna talk with Jane about that. I think there are certain business records that are not subject to the public records law under the state of North Carolina.
There may be certain ones, but there may be some that are privileged information and maybe some that are public information.
What we have done in other agreements, when there are provisions that talk about confidentiality or protection of records, in an effort not to get bogged down in the legal lease, will often say, "as provided by law."
Okay, that'd be fine.
And so recognize that this is what the contract calls for, but there may be requirements in the public records law that would require disclosure.
Yeah.
And so what we might wanna do to that final sentence under Paragraph 6 is put, "as provided by law."
That would be fine.
Yes, sir.
I think that would cover it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you need a motion for that change, or can you just simply make that change?
I'm sorry, I've lost track of where we are with regard to the board's consideration of this. Has the board approved this? It hasn't approved the contract yet.
Yes, sir.
So at this point, you may want, if the document is otherwise satisfactory to the board, you may want to move for its approval based on those two amendments.
And I'll say move, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
If anyone else has any other discussions.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Thank you, Chair.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner McClure is still not present in the meeting. Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Shores?
Yes.
Commissioner Trul?
Yes.
Vice Chair Yates?
Yes.
Chair Watford?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries by a vote of 5-0.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving on to deliberation. We have a proclamation of April being Public Health Month, and I've asked Commissioner Trul to share this proclamation.
Oh, wait a minute, I gotta find the right glass. Proclamation, Public Health Month, April 2021. Whereas the Davidson County Health Department has served the community for more than 100 years and provided immeasurable contributions to enhancing the quality of life for our residents, and whereas public health programs have evolved over the past century from a focus on sanitation and controlling the spread of infectious diseases to now also preventing the onset of chronic diseases, and whereas the significant increase in the life expectancy is widely credited to improvements in public health programs, and whereas public health promotes improved lifestyles by providing services and supporting policies to help young people stay well and develop into healthy adults. Now therefore be it resolved that the Davidson County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 as Public Health Month and encourage all citizens of Davidson County to take steps to protect and promote the health and well-being of their families by making healthy, personal, lifestyle choices and seeking regular preventive health care. This, the 23rd day of March 2021, is signed by our chairman, Commissioner Watford. Is someone here?
Ms. Coontz, are you out there?
She is.
Okay.
Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Okay, I have a motion to approve in a second.
Commissioner Shores is on us tomorrow.
Okay, just come on up, and we're gonna do a roll call vote, okay? Hold on just a second.
Commissioner McClure is still not present on the meeting. Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Shores?
Yes.
Commissioner Trul?
Yes.
Vice Chair Yates?
Yes.
Chair Watford?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries by a vote of 5-0.
Do I need to read this thing again?
No, no. Sorry, the speaker was not on outside, so I didn't know. Speaker's not on outside here.
There we go, now it is.
Commissioner Trul, you've read that proclamation down five years to me, so I might have it almost memorized.
I want you to know, we proclaim April.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
We're gonna take our picture. Y'all, we're gonna take a picture.
Okay.
Let's go ahead and do it now.
You're watering the wind.
Yeah.
One, two, three. You want more since we think it's on? One, two, three.
Okay. Yeah.
Say something really quick about this.
We'd love to hear from you.
Thank you so much, and thank y'all so much for this. I think usually when I come up here, I try to tell y'all, every month is Public Health Month, and that does not mean more than a year of responding to a pandemic. The Davidson County Health Department has met more Davidson County residents in this last year than we knew existed, and so we are on the tip of the tongue for a lot of our residents now. People are paying attention to us, and they're learning about other services as well as things that we're doing for COVID-19 response. So we really appreciate your acknowledgement of April being Public Health Month, but like I said, it has been Public Health Month year responding to COVID-19. So thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, William.
Okay. We have a second proclamation, National Telecommunicators Week, and I've asked Commissioner Shell.
Rob and all of his folks are out in the hallway, too.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Hey, come on in.
Robert, be with me.
Good. Commissioner Shell's going to read your proclamation.
Okay. National 911 Telecommunicator Week, April 20th, 21st. Whereas 911 is nationally recognized as the number to call in an emergency to receive immediate help from police, fire, emergency, medical services, or other appropriate emergency response entities, and whereas 911 was designated by Congress as the national emergency call number under the Wireless Communications and Public Safety Act of 1999, Public Law 106-81, and whereas the Enhanced 911 Act of 2004, Public Law 108-494, established Enhanced 911 as a high national priority as part of our nation's homeland security and public safety, and whereas people of all ages use 911, and it is critical to educate the public of all ages on the proper use of 911, and whereas a growing segment of the population, including the deaf, hard of hearing, deaf-blind, and individuals with speech disabilities increasingly communicate with non-traditional text, video, and instant messaging, communication services, and anticipate that these services will be able to connect directly to 911, and whereas thousands of 911 calls are made every year by children properly trained on the use of 911, resulting in lives saved, which underscores the critical importance of training children early in life about 911, and whereas there is widespread misuse of the 911 system, including prank, non-emergency calls, which can result in costly and inefficient use of 911 and emergency response resources. Now therefore, the Davidson County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 11th, 2021 through April 17th, 2021, as National 911 Telecommunicator Week, and call upon all government officials, parents, teachers, school administrators, caregivers, business leaders, nonprofit organizations, and the people of Davidson County to observe this month with training events and activities to educate the public on 911 and its services. This, the 23rd day of March 2021. With that, Madam Chair, I make a motion to pass the proclamations.
Thank you. Have a motion in a second. We'll do a roll call vote.
Commissioner McClure is still not in the meeting. Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Shores?
Yes.
Commissioner Trul?
Yes.
Vice Chair Yates?
Yes.
Chair Watford? Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you, y'all. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank y'all.
Good woman. He's out of the store.
He's out of the store. Get off to the races.
We'll take a picture.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You come right here.
Me and Jameson, if you want to.
Okay. President of the board, Mr. S. C.
You've done this more than me.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Hold it, my brother.
One, two, three. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Coming in.
One, two, three. I have the honor of to be able to say, I've been here five years, but tomorrow's my second year, being your 911 director, so I wanted to say thank you for the board, for your support for two years. I've enjoyed my two years here, and I'm looking forward to a long future here with Davidson County. So thank you.
Good, thank you.
I can't forgive you.
No worries, Shores, worn out this seat.
All right, Mr. Leonard, come on up. We're going to be talking about the performance guarantee bond for Phase 1 of Bryson Park, and Mr. Leonard will lead this off.
Members of the board, tonight we have an unusual request. I don't think the board is used to approving these types of bonds, but two and a half years ago, the Board of Commissioners at that time approved a large development off of Hegy Road. If I can refer to the aerial, just to kind of remind the board, those of you that were here, this was called the Old Kleinerd Farm off of Hegy Road in the Arcadia Township, and a proposal came to the board for 440 individual townhomes, and the board approved that in October of 2018. Well, two and a half years later, the developer is asking this board to allow him to record the first phase of this prior to being completely finished with what we as the county require to be approved before we can sign off on it. In other words, all the infrastructure is supposed to be in, and then we get engineering certifications on all the infrastructure before we allow for anything to be platted and recorded. Well, I've got a couple of pictures that I wanna show of this property. That's what the board approves, and what we're gonna be approving tonight, or what you are being asked to approve, is the bond to allow the first phase of this large development to be recorded so that these individual lots can actually be sold before the power is actually in. I went out there Friday, and to give you a little bit of an idea of where they are in the construction, this is the entryway. You see, the roadway is completed, and you can see, as we flip through a few of these things, you can see the sewer outfall, the sewer's in, the ditches are in, they're putting the water lines are in, but as we continue to flip around, there's the fire hydrant letting you know the water's in. As we continue to go around, you'll see the problem, and that is the power has not yet been completed. And as we continue with this, you'll see that they're still trying to put in the boxes here, and that's the entryway as we've made our loop all the way back. Everything else seems to be in place and in order, but the last couple of shots, I'll let you know, and Mr. Kai Bunker is here today to explain what these pictures are and why this may be part of the delay that is causing this project to be held up. But he has, you have before you in my memo, an estimated letter, or a letter from Energy United, who's gonna be putting in the power, stating that they estimate that to finish the power in this project, it will cost them about $167,500. And therefore, the developer is here to ask for this Board of Commissioners to accept a bond in that amount that would be received by the county in lieu of the power being in there so that we as a staff would approve this first phase, allow them to record that plat, and then sell these lots to a builder. And Mr. Bunker's gonna come up and explain to you why the delay and what the procedure will be if the board approves this bond, who he's gonna sell it to, and things of that nature, and I'll be back up to answer any question that you may have.
Thanks, Scott. He did, you know, as he always does, a pretty good job of explaining it, but the weather, and I think it's good, he kinda mentioned it in his pictures, there's really delayed this project a lot. Like, as he mentioned, two and a half years ago, we had approval. It normally doesn't take us that long to put in a subdivision, but we just keep having so much rain, it seems like. Energy United is in there currently and putting, installing the power, but what this will allow us to do is go ahead and sell the lots because we're already so far behind schedule. They're probably about halfway done. We actually have had, you know, some good weather in March. They've been able to work three out of the four weeks so far, so that's good. Tally Point down the road is about half the size, and it took them two months to get through there, and so we just have fears with the weather, and that's why we're asking for this. And I believe in the ordinance as well, doesn't it mention?
It does. The zoning ordinance allows for bonding to be an option, and the subdivision ordinance, if this was a regular subdivision, it allows the same opportunity, but it does require it to come back to the governing body to accept this, because what you're doing is if this plat is put on record, I believe there's an individual builder, is it Horton? Dr. Horton will come in and buy the whole, all the entire Phase 1, pay for all those lots, but they cannot start building until the county is satisfied. for all those lots, but they cannot start building until the county is satisfied with the infrastructure. In other words, the bond will take place of the power, but I still have to have certification from the engineers that the road was completed to state standards, the water line and the sewer line's been done to state standards before I'll even sign off on it. But if I get that engineer certification and you accept the bond, I'll sign it, and they can record it before the power is completed. After it's completed, they will come back to this Board and ask to be released of that bond, and at that point, the Board can choose to release it, you know, pertaining to how the staff feels it's been done adequately or not.
Scott, if we do accept the bond, is there a time limit that he has to get this approved?
Well, there's typically in the bond, an expiration date, and therefore, when we receive it as a staff, we take a notice of that, and we keep up with that because we don't want the delayed, well, we don't want the, let me put it this way. There is an expiration date, but we're not going to let a building permit go forward before the power's in. So, there is an expiration date in case this thing continues, and if that date approaches, it's our job to bring it back to this Board and either extend it or end it based on whatever the circumstances is at that time. But I did want to reassure the Board that we're not going to allow building permits to proceed until the power's in. This bond only allows the developer to go ahead and put it on record so that he can get paid for these lots, and then the builder has to sit on it and wait until the engineer or the power is in. And they've worked out an agreement that they're willing to do that.
And nothing holds us liable from the builder that says, why did y'all let them plat them? The electricity's not in yet, and here we've bought lots, so that can't come back on us?
I hope not. We have some experience with bonding, and we've never had that come up. And given the fact that it's Energy United makes me feel a lot more comfortable. Sometimes when we receive bonds, it may be for just the road construction, and we don't know who the grading guy is or the paver may be, and we get a little worried. Energy United, we're pretty confident that they're not only going to do it at an appropriate time, but they're not going to have a problem with the cost or what they've estimated. So, I don't know about the liabilities that we're under. We've never, in all the bonding that we've approved, we've never had that issue before, so I feel confident that we won't, but I don't know enough about insurance liabilities and things like that to know what may happen unexpected.
Madam Chairman, Scott made reference to the statutory, or the language which is set out in our zoning ordinance, and it specifically provides that required bonds shall be provided for review by the governing body to ensure the completion of required public facilities and services as described in the development plans as submitted. It seems here that there would not be any exposure of liability to the county on several counts. One, that we have an estimate from the electrical company as to what this is going to cost, and the bond will be in that amount to complete the project. And then, as a secondary matter, the developer is going to want to finish this so he can sell the property and get those lots sold. And so, this is, I think, more of a technical requirement here than it may be in other situations where the county has some concern about their willingness to move forward. He wants this to happen, and wants it to happen soon, and so I don't think that there is much of a likelihood of any challenge being made to this bond.
I mean, I don't either, but I'm just saying.
Yeah.
That, you said, public facility?
That's the way the, it reads in the ordinance, yes, to ensure the completion of required public facilities and services. And I think what the, it's being read into that, that you're talking about water and electrical services.
Yes, I'm assuming all the infrastructure is public services. I know we have Davidson County Sewer that we, I spoke to Charlie today, he's already willing to say that the sewer's put in adequately, but we're going to require an engineer to certify that, water the same way, road construction the same way. So, I'm assuming all the infrastructure is under that public services.
And I'm good with that, but to me, the only reason you, we would accept a bond, if he forfeited, we would be required to finish the project.
That is true. That is true.
I mean, I don't care. You can say we had any liability or not, but that's why we're
Yes.
required to get the bond.
Yeah, if he left the project totally, it would be up to the county to make sure that Energy United finished the project.
Or somebody.
Yes.
No matter the cost. We just have a bond for a hundred and fifty thousand bucks.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to say, like Charlie mentioned, we're very incentivized to finish this project out. So, I understand what you're saying, but it's just not going to happen here. And, you know, like in Keith's letter, I think you mentioned, it's in their packets, he mentions that, you know, we're going to stay in there and finish it. So, Keith said, you know, they won't pull out of there if it's halfway done, so.
This is significantly different from situations where we've asked for a bond with regard to a roadway because of the passage of time and the ability of the developer to withdraw. Here, he needs to get this done so he can sell those lots.
But if the developer was to go bankrupt, no matter what kind of desire he's got, and he's finished, you know?
But you're likely to have.
Hey, I'm not talking about you. I'm talking about.
But in, and in the abstract, you're likely to have someone else step into those shoes pretty quickly.
Well, they'd have to come in and finish the grading. I mean, it's important to know whether it would be feasible for them or not, you know?
And the grading is complete. It's just the power that we still have to get.
Actually, I don't have a problem with this one. I'm just speaking, I'm letting the Board know, Kelly, where I see this could go.
Yeah.
In a bad world, you know?
Sure. No, I understand the concern, but also like with the roads that he mentioned, the developer pays for, you know, the turn lanes or the asphalt, all that stuff, but we're not, we don't even pay for the power. Energy United, you know, puts that in and on out. If they put it in, install it the first time, and we decide to, you know, move the lots around, then we do have to pay for that, but we don't even pay for this first installation. So, there's no incentive at all for us to try to not finish it.
No, there's not. And like I say, as long as the grading's done, they'll come in and install the power, but if y'all was to walk away right now, they're not going to finish the grading and put their power in, you know? So, but anyway, I'm good with it.
Yeah. Yeah, too. My, you know, my question was more just from my understanding. I wondered if, if the weather continued, you know, it rained one time for forty days. If it kept raining, and he had to extend it, I just wondered what our.
Yeah, if it continues, I will certainly keep track of the time, expiration time on that, and to speak to what Mr. Yates is saying. The Board does not have to accept the bond. If the Board rejected the bond, then the developer would just have to wait on Energy United and the weather to complete this project. So, you know, it's strictly up to your decision.
How many lots are we talking about?
I think it's ninety-six.
Yeah. Because I can tell you, the developer would be here pointing his finger to us going, y'all let this plat, and we bought them. And.
Yeah. The builder is a large track builder that's doing a lot of work in Davidson County, so it's interesting to me that they've entered into this agreement with the developer and saying, hey, we'll pay you for the ninety-six lots, just get them on record. So, they're willing to do that, which is fascinating for me, but I mean, I'm not a businessman, but that's interesting.
I'm a little more worried about that than I am the electricity part, because like you said, Energy United will put that in.
Oh, yeah.
Again, your developer, your home builder's going to come in and say, look, y'all planted these lots, and they wasn't ready yet, so.
Commissioner Yates, in looking at this language in the ordinance, the Board might consider then requiring the developer to put language in any contract with a subsequent buyer indicating that the Energy United work on the property had not been completed in addition to the bond.
Mm-hmm.
So that there would be notice there about that.
I think that's a good idea.
And there needs to be something in there, because like I say, there's ninety-some lots here, and if this home buyer buys them and this thing's not finished, I mean, I get it, y'all probably good and ready to go, but if not, then we've got a big problem on.
I don't think you would have any challenge with that, that.
Oh, no, no.
With a provision that if there's a major agreement.
Right.
Anything like that, then that's fine. We can get, you know, the developer or the builder.
Right.
I think what you would need in the future, Scott, is a bond to finish the project before you put them on plat. You know, in that way, it's, I mean, whatever it costs to finish the project.
When you say the project, you mean just the Phase One is what they're after?
Right, right. That phase, before we could plat them, we would need the bond to finish the whole thing, the dirt work, the, you know, I don't know if they've got the topping on the asphalt yet. I mean, you know, because we're plating lots, and we're saying that they're going to be finished, you know? I mean.
That's a very good point, because all you're receiving tonight is a bond for just the power. I'm going to wait, and I'm going to get certification that the other infrastructure is adequate, but any kind of erosion control measures, cleanup, anything like that is not covered, other than just what the staff will hold them up to. And of course, if the builder says, hey, it's platting, the power's in, give us our building permits, you know, I don't know of any other kind of completion. Normally, for a regular subdivision, once we get the engineering certification that all the infrastructure is in, and it looks decent, the shoulders are seated and sown, and all the grass is growing, we'll release it. In this case, we have planned to do the same thing, you know, just, we're holding it up until, instead of holding up the plat, we're holding up the building permits. That's what's different. We're allowing the plat to be recorded. It's a legal lot now, but we're holding, withholding the building permits until all this stuff is done. And we've done that before, and we feel like we're on good standing with it, but there's other liabilities that I'm unaware of that may, it may come in. I don't know of any, but it's possible.
Like I say, I'm just looking at worst-case scenario. They get a check for the lots and say bye, then, you know, you got the developer or the builder going, so I just want to make the Board aware of that. That's my thoughts at that point. I mean, I hope these guys are, finish it and that kind of thing, but I mean, that's, that's where we're sticking our neck into, in my opinion.
It's like ninety-five percent graded, and there's some, you know, erosion control pond that might end up closing, but the lot and all that's done.
Well, I agree that most of the work is done that we normally would see. I think, and plus, the ordinance doesn't specifically give you the right, and Chuck, pardon me if I'm going beyond where I need to go, but if, in other cases, like in the subdivision ordinance, the Board could ask for a hundred and twenty-five percent of an estimated cost just to cover the contingencies that may sneak up. The zoning ordinance doesn't say you can do that, so I don't know if that is something that would be, you know, to cover the stuff that may be unforeseen right now. But I don't know if that's legally where we can go or not, but I know in the subdivision ordinance, we routinely do that when we do bonds.
Well, you just have to have a estimate on what it would cost to finish the project.
That'd be the thing that you don't have in front of you.
Not just the power.
Yeah.
What's it going to cost to finish the project? So, I mean, I'm good. Hopefully, this one will go good, but again, we need to watch this and maybe.
What about performance bond?
I'm sorry?
Performance bond?
Yes, that's what this would be. Yeah. Yeah, this is a performance bond to finish this project from the energy side, from the power side, because they're telling me that everything else is in. From my site visit, everything else is in, and now I'm going to require certification that it was done properly, but the power is obviously not in. So, the bond is, this performance bond is only in regards to the power to the property.
And that itself helps cover the county in event of default.
Absolutely. If the developer leaves, we've got the insurance company that will cover the cost of the power being put in here.
And the person who buys the plat, if he includes in the document what Chuck suggested while ago, which I think is a good idea, he could also require them to do something if he wanted to.
Yeah.
If he ignored it, then.
Absolutely. Before he writes the check to buy the lots, I'm sure he can.
So, that would be between him and the plat?
Yes.
As long as we've, we've got our stuff covered.
Yes, sir.
Make sure we're answerable.
Madam Chairman?
Do you want to have a motion?
Yeah.
From?
I make a motion that we approve the performance guarantee bond that's put in place for Phase One of Bryson Park.
Bryson Park. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Shale. We'll have a roll call vote.
Let me check one more time. Commissioner McClure's still not in the meeting. Commissioner Shale?
Yes.
Commissioner Shores?
Yes.
Commissioner Cool?
Yes.
Vice Chair Yates?
Yes.
Chair Walker?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries by a vote of five zero.
A lot of trust in you there. I hope you finish, okay? Because that should have been a no for me, and.
He had a couple weeks ago.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
He hadn't indicated that he was going to, so we're not real sure.
All right, we're going to move on to ask Mr. Goodson to.
Chairman, you think we should, maybe with Mr. McClure?
Check on Ms. McClure. Has anybody?
Excuse him. Do we need to excuse Mr. McClure?
I've been reluctant to suggest that because I was hoping at some point he was going to step in.
Yeah.
And I assume there hasn't been any further communication from him.
I checked my emails and my texts, and I don't have anything.
Let's, you want to stop right now? Do I have a motion to excuse Commissioner McClure?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I do have a motion, and I have a second. We'll do a roll call vote, and then Mr. Goodson can come up.
Who made the motion?
Commissioner Cool.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, we'll do this, and then we can just do verbal votes from here on out, because I don't have the click.
Right, okay.
Okay. Shale?
Yes.
Mr. Shores?
Yes.
Commissioner Cool?
Yes.
Vice Chair Yates?
Yes.
Chair Walker?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries by a vote of five zero.
All right, Mr. Goodson's going to lead off a discussion about a lease or a sale of property at the I-85 Corporate Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is kind of unusual. This really is not an EDC matter, but the city of Lexington Utilities and Sustain Renewables Natural Gas is doing a pilot program to take natural gas from dairy farmers, and then they're going to put it into the Lexington Utilities National, Natural Gas Line. So, when they were going through the process, they were kind of working together, and they identified Belmont Road is a really good place to do that, and they wanted to do it on right in front of Lot Five. So, they contacted me. I told them they couldn't do that because that would make Lot Five unmarketable because the way they wanted to do it. But I said, we'd be happy to consider selling them that lot, because it's not in the park. It's really outs, it's part of the park, but it's on Belmont Road, doesn't have access to Agro Parkway. So, they didn't, they didn't want to do that, and then I remembered that with all of the USDA grant money that we were getting, part of that required us, we had bought some small parcels, and part of one of the parcels that we bought, when we bought it, we weren't sure, we really didn't know when we entered, started to enter an agreement, that there was additional land down, further down Belmont Road. And so, when we transferred the land to the county, it became county property, and it actually is, you know, it's right down, it's right down the road, and they identified it and did a small site plan. And so what they want to do is come in, they would come in off Belmont, they would have a, they would get, they would get the natural gas from the dairy farms. They would bring a truck, one truck or two trucks a day. They would weigh the truck, then they would offload the natural gas, and then they go through another weigh station, weigh the truck again to identify how much gas they had put into the system, and then they come off the Norfolk Southern Rail, that road that goes to the rail yard, and then come back out. Process takes about an hour. There is no smell according to Sustain. Um, process takes about an hour, there is no smell, according to Sustain Renewables Natural Gas. But they wanted to lease the property. So, um, I sent something to Casey, and Casey and Chuck reviewed it. Uh, what they would like to do is a fifteen-year lease on a little over an acre of property, right there on the corner, uh, there, and, um, for a fifteen-year lease with two five-year extensions, um, they looked at the market, um, area for land leases and said that they thought that, um, somewhere in the sixteen cents to twenty cents a square foot per year would, would be a, a good price based on their marketing. I did some research, there's not a whole lot of research on, on leasing, doing a ground lease for something like this. Typically, it's for a, a retail restaurant or something in a, in a big retail development. Uh, but what I could find, it looked like lease rates were more in the, for this, should be more in the sixty-five to seventy-five cents, uh, per square foot per year. Um, so, so what, talked to Chuck today, and he kinda felt like the, probably the next step would be for, um, if you, if you want to do something like that, is to give me the authority to negotiate, um, the, what the final proposal would be, and then bring it back, um, for approval for the board.
You got the picture of the whole area?
Yeah, that's what I wanted to say.
That's related to Edgar and his other flats?
Well, if you look, I, well, I do not, but if you look at the, that picture, I gotta head.
It's hard to say.
This is the road that goes into the rail yard, and then the, right over here is the convenience station for the.
Trash.
Songway, yeah. So it's past, it's past Egger and kind of around, around the corner a little bit. The property, property generally kinda, kinda is kinda low, it kinda goes down. I think there's a, there's a lot of water that comes off the rail from the back end, because the rail's higher at that point. Um, and there's, there's a lot, that's where, uh, when they were doing the construction for the Forest Main, for, uh, the business, for the industrial park, that's where they hit, most of their rock was along that area. So it's got a lot of rock in it.
They had a paved road, and then it's got a tunnel, you go underneath the tunnel?
Right there, yep. And, you know, I, but as far as, I think from a, from a industrial park standpoint, it, it really has, it really has no negative effect to it. Um, from an EDC standpoint, it, the, the only, the only reason I thought it might be beneficial is because over a fifteen-year period, you know, it could generate a half a million dollars' worth of revenue. Um, so, you know, it's for, for nothing else.
Do we own the land around it?
You.
On the other side, or is that on the edge?
You own, you now own from the, from where the road is, all the way up to where the first house is. And that, it's about, it's a long skinny lot, it's about seven or eight acres, it's just a long way. 'Cause there's, there's not much depth to it.
It's not continuous to the property that we think of as being the business, the corporate center of the business park. Um, this was acquired by the county, not really out of desire, but because it was included in a larger piece that we got in, when we were completing, or when the EDC was acquiring on behalf of the county, properties that we needed for part of the business park.
What are some, some discussion a while about, about expanding the size of that park and, and looking to purchase some of that land?
Not that land. No, the, 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 really, the, right now, the land that we would, if we were going to do something and ha- and could be able to get the funding to do it, it would be, it would be the land that would go from, basically from starting at the back of Egger and going all the way down to exit eighty-four, which is about eight hundred acres. Um, and then there is some land on the, on one side of Clyde Fitzgerald that goes up, that, that we could purchase, this is about fifty acres. Um, Jim Bell has property, but his properties are, um, are in a, some kind of, some kind of conservatory, that's put in there, and I, and likely that will never be able to get, be, be taken out of that, that we could pur- that we could purchase that property.
And why would Lexington want to lease an area that way out there?
Apparently, it's, it's, they've identified that as the, the best place for them to tap their line to put gas into their line, and it's renewable gas, you know.
Now, this ain't the city of Lexington, this is a, um, energy, what's the name of the?
Well, the, the, it's called Sustain RNG, it's a renewable natural gas company. And, and the city of Lexington is willing to do it, because it puts more renewables into their system, um, which makes their gas cleaner, and, and it would be extra volume that they would get at, at a, apparently a reasonable price.
Yeah, what are they actually gonna be storing out there? Is it not?
It goes dr-.
Methane gas?
It goes, it goes directly into the line. It, it, it's not, it's not gas that's stored on site, the truck, truck goes in, they, they offload it, and then it goes directly into the natural gas line that Lexington has, so there's no storage of gas.
Now, they're wanting to lease, uh, just a portion, you said how many?
They want to lease that blue, that blue portion, which is a little bit over an acre.
Does that, and the entire lot is, how many acres?
It's about eight, seven or eight acres.
Does this, does this make the other seven or eight acres unusable?
Uh, i- in my opinion, no, I don't, I don't know what the use of that land is going to be, quite frankly. It was just land that was part, we needed a small piece to do the, um, stormwater pond that we're getting, that, where the water coming off the road and the water coming off the, uh, lots two and three. And so we were gonna be building that, and we needed, we were, where it was gonna go to maximize Lot Three was gonna be in part of that, that area. And we had, the EDC had some grant money from, um, North Carolina Commerce that we had not spent yet. And so we just went ahead, there were, there was, it ended up being that parcel, and there were a couple other parcels in the park that were creating some issues, because they were never purchased. And we had enough money to go ahead and buy those. And then, uh, and then we were, all along, we were planning on trans- uh, transferring it to the county, but then when the grant came up with the USDA, the county had to own that one little piece. Well, to own that one little piece required, required transferring the hu- the bigger piece, twelve acres total.
Well, this, this entire eight acres here, this lot, what would you value that at?
Personally?
Well, I mean, if EDC changed.
Maybe five thousand dollars an acre.
Eighty-five thousand dollars.
Maybe five thousand dollars.
Five thousand dollars an acre.
It's lo- it's low lying, it's got rock, it's right up against the rail. Um, it, it's, it's, it's not really good for, it's not gonna be for development. Um, it might be, uh, for some kind of yard that the county may need to, for trucks or some other services, that it might wanna put, it, it would, it might be good property for that, but it wouldn't be development property.
Do you say?
The rail?
Mm-hmm.
Would that not it, would that, could it be possible that that could interfere with this future spur?
No. If, 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 we couldn't put a spur there, because if we put a spur there, we couldn't put anything else there.
Even if expanded?
Mm.
If you put that there, how you gonna put anything else there?
What?
That.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I, I, I don't think anything's ever gonna go there, except for something like that. Something like that, or somebody wants to come in and maybe buy a piece of property to gravel it and.
Store trailers or something.
Store trailers or something, yeah. Yeah, it just really isn't developable.
I got a question, you intrigued me a while ago. Tell me about the half a million dollars for fifteen years?
Well, I looked at, um, let me see, if, if, I looked at it, and it, at sixty-five cents per square foot per year for fifteen years, even if there was no escalation, that would generate four hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars in revenue.
Okay.
And at sixty-five cents, I would say you probably wanna increase it five percent every five years. So it, it would, it would exceed a half a million dollars for not doing anything on property that you're probably never gonna put a building on anyway.
So you started off, I heard twenty cent a while ago, and I heard possibility of sixty-five.
They said twenty cents.
Right, so.
Yeah.
You feel like sixty-five cents, uh?
I do, I personally, I personally would think, I wouldn't even mess with this, if I wasn't gonna get.
I agree.
Something like that, you know.
Where do fifteen years come from?
They, they would like a fifteen-year lease with two five-year extensions.
Yeah, they got a pretty big investment there, a couple sets of scales, pump, pump system and taps into the gas line and.
That's the same thing we do at the landfill, isn't it?
Pretty much, yeah. Just a little different method of, the way they get it in there.
Yeah.
And the only thing I'd be concerned about is the smell, I'm like you, I don't think the property would ever be probably bringing that kind of money from anybody else, if we can get sixty-five cent out of it.
Uh, apparently from them and from the city, what they're doing, there will be no smell. 'Cause there's no storage.
Well, during the offload.
During the offload, and they said it goes, you know, I mean, it's.
Well, and we don't even know the.
It's so contained, because, I mean, you know, it's, it's a little, I guess, gotta be a little dangerous.
Right, explosive.
Um, but the way, the way it's done, it just goes straight from that truck right into it, right into the line, yeah.
Man, Chairman, I don't see any reason he can't negotiate with them anyway, so that's all he's, we need to do now.
Is that a motion?
Well, yeah, but, I mean, you know, I don't know if we're gonna set any parameters of how low we'll go, or how, uh... Well, I know we won't set any parameters, how high we'll go.
I think Mr. Goodson was, um, was seeking direction from the board.
Yeah.
To, um, respond to their proposal for a fifteen-year lease with two five-year extensions, and at a rate of sixty-five cents a square foot, is that correct, sir?
I would say it's sixty-five cents square foot with five percent increases every five years.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Consensus is all you need.
Consensus, all you need.
Yes, I think so.
All you need with fifteen years?
I, I am, I.
Um, yeah.
I'll be okay with twenty-five years.
Yeah, we'll be dead and gone.
I mean, I just don't think there's much more for that piece of property to.
I don't.
As we want to expand, uh, the convenience site over there, something, we've got plenty of room for that already.
Well, it, it would be, it would be nice, it would be nice for, um, Lot Six, which is eleven acres, which is beside Lot Five, which is beside the convenience station. If, if we got somebody wanting to do that, there's, there's room to put maybe a hundred thousand square feet on that lot, and it's gonna be a little detractive to have that right there.
So you're saying move the convenience center?
If we sold that, it might be a good place for that to go, yeah, depending on, depending on who wanted to go there. Because if, you know, at eleven acres, right now, it's, that, that's five hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we'd sell it for, you know.
So where, where would you put the convenience center, uh?
I'd just put it right beside it.
Right beside it, on the other side, I don't really know where it lays, but, yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay.
I think we are.
I mean, it's a long time, Steve, but it'll be here before you know it, so.
Mm-hmm.
I just think about if anything went wrong, and you locked into a fifteen-year lease. Oh, I like to at least have, you know, five years, see how it's going. If it's stinking out there, if it's not being held properly, you know, but y'all wanna go fifteen?
Well, that, I mean, my thing here says possible lease or sale, are they interested in sa- in buying too?
Well, they, they, they are not interested in buying property.
Okay.
From the standpoint of our lease of the property, if a lease is for a duration of longer than ten years, we have to observe the same formalities in acquiring the lease that we do through a sale. And so it basically allows three methods for a lease that's longer than ten years. One, you, you go through an auction, which is not realistic, because there's only one person interested. Second, you go through an offer and sealed bids, or third, you go through a private negotiation, such as we're doing here, and then an upset bid period. And so if we're able to reach a consensus, or reach an agreement with them, then we'll have to come back and then go through a public period, when we'll advertise this and allow someone to come in and upset that bid if they wish to do so.
In excess of ten years?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
And you know, Commissioner Shell's concerns need to be put in the lease, about the smell, you know? We won't allow any.
Right.
Well, I think there's other piece about the possible, he, he just alluded to it a minute ago, the safety.
Mm-hmm.
It's his methane, so.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
You got it near trash, or you got it near another business, I mean, I'm not saying nothing will happen, but they need to, they're gonna have to take the liability piece of that, so. It's not pretty clear of danger, I'm not saying it's probably minimal, given their business, um, but. Well, y'all wanna go through what Chuck described, if you go along with ten years, or you wanna set it for ten years? Or negotiate for ten years?
And now, Casey just said something to me, it made me think a little bit, she's pretty close to the industrial park. What kinda, you know, is that gonna make some, anybody concerned that you're unloading and loading gas that close, uh?
I, I can't answer that.
Yeah, we won't know until we get a prospective person in there, but, I mean.
I mean, I don't know if it would make their insurance any higher, or, you know, I mean, you never know, I don't know. I mean, it ain't something I've ever run across, that you had a gas tap and was unloading tankers of gas, uh, how many a day?
They said one to two possible, no more than two.
I mean, it may not be no big deal, probably our insurance guy could answer that for us, and say, yeah, that would be a concern to somebody building somewhat of an explosive plant or something there, there already, you know, or.
We can get on that piece while he's negotiating that lease, I guess, if you want to, so we don't slow things down, but I can have Tony, uh, run it by our liability folks, too. I, I don't know, I don't know anything about this type of business. I'm assuming it's, it's very, um, what the right word is, it's probably done very.
Safely.
Safely, I mean, given.
Yeah.
What you're doing there.
And I would.
Well, and I can, I can go back to Lexington Utilities and, and see if they have done any of that as well. I mean, I'm assuming, um, which I shouldn't, that Lexington Utilities feels okay about the safety of that gas, of what's being done, um, and has done some homework, but, you know.
Does anybody use, uh, gas at the park now, in high volume?
Egger.
They use it in high volume?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
They use everything in high volume.
Okay. I didn't know, I mean, I didn't know.
They do, yeah.
They use gas.
Mm-hmm.
I thought I'd heard originally that they wouldn't use that much gas.
They, they're using, uh, everybody is very pleased with the service that they're providing to Egger right now.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
So with that being said, if there's already high-volume gas there, then I don't know that your exposure's any different.
Shouldn't, I mean, they're.
Right, you know, so I, I decline my comment, I think we're good.
But we definitely can, I mean, if it's something that's in the lease, I would, I would say that we would have something that would, um, cancel, make the lease cancelable, if there, if there are smells. We do identify smells, if there's something like that, that, that can cancel a lease. So that, that, I would assume that would at least be one thing we'd want them to put in there.
The good thing is, it's not like a typical thing, we shut down with no infrastructure out there, thirty days notice ought to be enough to get out of it, because you're not, you didn't build anything on the property, you know, it's, it's not like trying to get out of a, a lease or something, you've got a business there with the infrastructure, you know, it's not.
Should we do the ten, ten years versus the fifteen?
Ten years versus fifteen?
I mean, you have to see what this company, like I say, they got some, they're gonna spend some money out here, so they ain't gonna spend it for too short a lease, but.
I'm gonna guess that, they, fifteen is somehow fitting into their pro forma, that's what makes their pro forma work. But it, this is, this is not an, an EDC initiative. This is something that we're, it's your property, and it's an income opportunity that we thought that we should at least bring to y'all. And, and we can craft, we can craft whatever agreement at whatever terms and, and rates that y'all want. And if they don't do it, I, there's, there's no downside to the county or the EDC to do it or not do it. But, is what, is my thinking.
Or they can go down the road and find them another place.
Or they can go down the road.
But Mr. Frye, you said if we go fifteen.
But Mr. Frye, you said if we go fifteen, then we have to go through these other ob, uh, obstacles. Is that correct?
No, sir. If any lease that is ten years or longer has to go through the same degree of formality. And, and that's not a high standard. Simply what we do is we, we reach a negotiated agreement with them and then the board comes in and directs that there be a period in which upset bids could be entered. Public notice be given and upset bids could be accepted. We, we've done that before. And it, it's, it's not a challenge to us in doing that. So if we do it for ten years or fifteen years, it doesn't make any difference with regard to the procedure we have to go through.
Okay.
That there are, just real quickly, there are three different distinctions in the law. If a year, if a lease is for a year or less, there's a low level of formalities. If it's for less than ten years, there's sort of a medium level. And then if it's for ten years or more, then you have to treat it as with the same level of formalities we would do for a sale. Yes, sir.
So what would that process cost the county?
There will be, um, an advertising cost in doing that, right.
Do a legal notice in the paper?
And, you know, we've talked about that just recently with our advertising. Madam Clerk, how much would that be?
It's going to be relatively inexpensive. Even with the dispatch, it wasn't a great deal of money that we've done. I think the last one we did was a piece of property over in Thomasville where we sold some folks, um, some of the property that we, the county had purchased for, it's the sewer easements. And it was adjacent to their property and they approached us to, to purchase it. And then the, the upset period, so I mean, the legal notice is going to be the only expense.
And we certainly, you know, we could put as part of the negotiation that that is an expense that has to be borne by the, the less, yeah, yeah. But in greater scheme of things, it's going to be a couple of hundred dollars versus, you know, the, the totality of the arrangement. It's, uh, it's going to get lost in that.
And that's the way you'd want to do it anyhow, is transparency. I mean, that's why the law's there to give somebody else an opportunity to upset the bid, you know?
And, and also if, if they, and they do want extensions to the lease, w- once it gets to ten years and, and they get, and they extend the lease, then we have to do what he just said anyway. Cause it, now it's become a more than, the, the, it's, it's a, it would, if they said ten years with two fives or, or another ten, that would make it longer than a ten year lease anyway.
Or actually what I think Chuck was saying, it'd have to be nine years and eleven months.
Yeah, with no renewals.
With no renewals, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, bring me up aside, just make sure you know what you're doing. You got a, you got a billion dollar investment out there. I don't want to chase these people away, cause you got gas works right around the corner from them.
I think at this point that you're just looking for some direction for further negotiation and before any action is taken, it's going to be brought back before the board. And I think, uh, Mr. Goodson's hearing some of the questions that have been raised tonight and, um, we'll, um, find some answers to that.
I'll, I'll give those answers.
Find out where the nearest one they got now is at, cause maybe somebody wants to take a ride. If it comes to rotation, maybe somebody wants to take a ride and watch them unload a
And see that.
Truck or something, you know?
Definitely do that. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number E is our public health COVID staffing and clinic pay. Mr. Smith is going to lead this off tonight.
Ma'am Chair, you've got an item here before you and I'm going to ask Lillian to come back in if she can. If you remember back in January, the board approved CARES Act funding. They've actually approved it on multiple occasions for the public health department as part of the pandemic. Uh, back in January, we approved, we approved fu, approved a total amount of funding that was to help run our vaccination clinics. And part of that was to do two office positions and an EMT. Um, the EMT, we're having a hard time finding that person for this type of work here. So what the proposal before you is, is to actually go ahead and eliminate or bust that up into two part-time nurse positions. And then the bottom part of it there is to, um, extend out, back in, back in February, we allowed for exempt employees to pick up, um, straight pay after over forty hours, uh, for running these clinics. We're doing more clinics now during the week as opposed to just Saturdays. So the proposal before you would do time and a half. All this would be through June thirty and, um, as long as the funding's available. The funding is still available because we still, if you flip over on page two, we're doing, we'll move some of these funds around to get them in the proper line items for overtime. But there's still a substantial amount of CARES Act funny, funding available.
There's no funds from the county.
No, no county funds involved in this at all, but this is addressed as a part of the overtime issue with exempt employees who, you know, by federal law don't usually receive overtime, but given the strings attached with these funds, they can. And so we've been doing straight time. The proposal is to do time and a half, particularly since we're adding more clinics. We're not just doing Saturdays anymore.
Let me ask you this, is, um, is the demand decreasing now for?
Great question, Commissioner Yates, and sadly, yes. Um, the demand is decreasing, but also it's changing. We're now in a different population in Davidson County where we're, um, trying to vaccinate people like me that have full-time jobs. So we're having to work outside of our typical public health hours, which is another strain on the department because we still have public health things to do. So we are moving to next week. We're going to have a Monday evening clinic. Our Saturday appointment's filled up really quickly. So our demand for Monday through Friday, eight to five appointments has gone down considerably. But we're hoping that when we open up to outside of those hours more than what we have been doing with just our Saturday, we'll be able to roll some more folks back in, um, that maybe they've just been waiting for new appointments. It's not been something that we've received a lot of calls about because had we, we would have made this change some time ago. But we've been able to accommodate people pretty well. But we're hoping that by changing it to a different, um, time slot for folks, we'll get the demand back up. But the demand is so low that today at, um, two o'clock, we opened up our appointments to group five. Um, and that was because tomorrow we have a clinic at West Campus from, um, eight thirty in the morning until four o'clock in the afternoon. And the one, the eleven, the two, they had a lot of openings in those time slots. And we have people scheduled to be there. They're going to be there to vaccinate. We needed to fill those appointments, so we opened it up to everyone today and they filled quickly.
Now, what's level five?
Level five's everybody, Commissioner Trow.
Uh, you, are you going to have it at Health Department tomorrow too?
Yes, sir. We'll be at the Health Department and OS Campus.
I just, I said you had a appointment.
Yeah, wanted to make sure they were right. Yes, sir.
I, I got one question that, when you said, and I think I read, it might have been a memo that I got, but that it was easier for you to find a public health nurse than an EMT? Why is that? Would, is an EMT that more qualified or something?
I, I don't know if that's it. I think the, the part-time nurses that we're able to find, um, the one that we've hired is in school to be an NP. So she doesn't have forty hours a week to give to a nursing job. We've also been in conversations with some folks that are young mothers who are nurses that are like, I'd love to work a couple hours a week. I don't want a forty hour a week job. I'm not as familiar with the folks that do the EMT type role to know if they have people who are in school for higher education or young mothers, but we couldn't get anybody. We interviewed a few people. We were so hopeful we could bring somebody on board, show them how great Davidson County is and get them pushed over to Larry's office. But we interviewed some, we made an offer, they declined. And so it just was one of those things that we're still in a need for somebody to work. And so we just had to make this change because I think it was, it was over a month ago now that y'all approved that, um, position for us.
So an EMT does have some higher qualifications in it?
I, higher qualifications might not be it, Commissioner Trow. I think it's just, again, like I said, the folks we're looking at are either young moms who don't want to work full-time or they're in school and I just don't think that the EMT folks are.
I misunderstood. I thought you said you, you had a public health nurse that was in school to be an EMT.
And, I'm sorry, a nurse practitioner.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Higher education, so I'm sorry.
How many vaccines are y'all doing a week?
Um, well, first doses, the last six weeks, our baseline was twenty-three forty Pfizer. And then it, it fluctuated a little bit with, um, Moderna and so two to three hundred. So twenty-five hundred first doses, but then we were hitting second doses too.
Is that for a week or six weeks?
A week. It, I mean, for the past six weeks, that was our baseline. So a week, we're doing about forty-five hundred vaccines, first and second dose combinations.
The Health Department?
Yes, sir.
How many nurses and EMTs you got doing this?
Not enough. Um, we got a lot of volunteers that are really great on our payroll right now. We've lost some folks. Um, I think we might have twenty-five nurses.
Lillian, a lot of these nurses, like everybody else, have spouses that work and there's a lot of issues with, I know I've fielded some of these phone calls, but, um, with them, like childcare and both parents being gone and now because of the hours that your nurses are being requested to work, um, it's, it's really putting a, a toll on them, uh, is the way I'm understanding it. Is that, is that correct as well?
Yes, sir. I think, um, there are a few of us, myself included, um, who haven't had a less than six day work week since December. Um, the demand is just there and when you sign up for public health, we, we write in all the job descriptions, may be responsible for responding to a pandemic. So everybody sort of knows it, but nobody really feels it like our staff has felt it lately. You're exactly right. Most times we're getting out, um, by six o'clock in the evening for the majority of the staff. Most staff, I heard, I overheard some conversations this Saturday. Some folks were on four Saturdays in a row. Um, the management team is trying to pick up that burden as best we can, but when, again, we're doing over forty-five hundred shots a week, it requires people to be there and do that. It's a two-person team at least. It is a vaccine giver and a data enterer. The data enterers are Davidson County staff members. We can't get volunteers for that because there's this whole like vetting system with the program, CVMS. So when we're talking about that many vaccines, it is a lot. We're asking staff to be away from their families, from their free time and it's a lot.
And even after you close, there's several hours of paperwork and things that have to be entered into the computer and stuff of that nature. Is that correct? So it's not an eight-hour day or a ten-hour day. It's twelve.
She said most are leaving at six, so.
Most are leaving at six.
Yeah, that's only an extra hour, huh?
That's for most staff. Our management team, I mean, I can just think of one person or two people right now, um, specifically on our management team that take home CVMS papers and enter them at their home, myself included. Um, because we have that twenty-four hour window that they're supposed to get in. The state said they would penalize us if we didn't show that we did our vaccines in that time. So we pack up our bags, we go home at seven. Most of us have somebody at home that'll cook something for us and we sit there and we work to get those papers in.
Are y'all being compensated for that time that you're doing county work at your home?
Well, we're exempt employees.
But, but still, you're spending four and five hours that you could be doing something with your family on, that you're doing, have, have to do county-involved work.
Again, I'd just like to say the public health department staff is really trying hard to do the best we can for our community. So I think, oh, in, in March, almost April is getting really weary for our team. Um, there was a lot more, um, energy a, a few months ago, but yes, sir, you're, you're hitting the nail on the head there. We're, um, doing a lot of work, but everybody's doing it with a smile and people come to our clinics and they're really happy with the service they receive. So we're so proud of the team, but they're working harder than I think I ever imagined, um, and probably harder than they ever imagined when they signed up to work for us.
So they're getting regular pay after, uh, the forty? Is that what I hear?
Currently exempt staff members, which are your management team folks and your nurses. Nurses are exempt. When I came to y'all after January first, it had been a, it was February. It was the information meeting in February. At that time, we did not have a great surplus that I, um, was able to pull from for overtime pay for exempt employees. So I asked for straight time on Saturdays. That meant nobody got paid anything extra if they worked late, worked through lunch or anything like that, Monday through Friday. But if somebody left their home on Saturday and came and worked and they were exempt, they got paid at the same rate or they got compensated at the same rate that their salary breaks down to an, an hourly rate. So if they worked eight hours on Saturday and their rate was twenty dollars an hour, they got paid twenty dollars an hour for eight hours instead of thirty dollars an hour for eight hours because it wasn't at time and a half.
So this is moving forward, right? Nothing, we're not going back any. This is moving forward.
Correct.
And this, and Casey, just correct me if I'm wrong, but like you said, this is not costing the county any money. The, the COVID relief money is paying for this. Is that correct? I, I think we should pay these folks. Uh, I know I've spoken with Commissioner Elliott and I think the money that, or the, the work that they've done is, I, I, I mean, words really doesn't, doesn't do it justice at the amount of work that these folks have put in. And I think for them to go home and work three and four hours at home and not be compensated, I, I, to me, I think that it is well worth giving them time and a half, uh, just to show our employees, you know, some appreciation and how much we care, so. I would like to see us do this.
Ma'am Chairman, I'd like to make a motion when everybody gets to a tone.
Okay.
Is everybody ready? I'd like to make a motion to approve both the reclassification and time-limited part-time position and approve the COVID clinic pay overtime from straight time to time and a half.
Second.
Okay, have a motion in a second.
What about the nurses? Uh, you going, you, that in your motion is what?
Yeah, that's for the reclassifying some of the
Okay, okay.
They're going to reclassify the EMT to a part-time nurse or something like that. But yeah, I got it all in there.
I got a question, Madam Chair, when you get to that part.
Okay, okay.
What other departments will this, uh, could this, uh, pertain to?
It won't.
We didn't have, we hadn't had any other departments that
And we don't have any that have COVID money like that specifically for them. Um, and I guess I could lay claim that, you know, nobody, um, quote unquote, dealing with the directness of the vaccines and the clinics as this department does.
So we don't have any other departments that are on straight salary that may have to work a lot of overtime?
Other exempt employees don't get overtime. If you're salaried, you don't get overtime, period. Again, this is a temporary thing, you know, it's not something we want to be doing long-term. Um, so what we're doing here
But again, I don't want to open it up to one department when we have other departments.
The funding, the funding that came with these, with this, the CARES Act dollars that come to public health directly had rules in it that allowed for this action to happen. So when the money goes away, this action will have to go away.
So it's not CARES Act dollars that we're doing this with?
Well, it's the re, it's the first, it's, it's not this new stimulus bill that just passed, it's the previous ones. We're still going back twenty-twenty, most of them.
Or what he's saying too, is, is anybody in any other department helping or are working with this, uh, with our Health Department during this?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
I can share with you, I see Chuck right there and Jason over here. They've, they've responded. They have volunteered. Jason spent a Saturday with us and flew under the radar and didn't tell our staff that he was the assistant county manager and then they found out who he was. And Chuck was running around like a crazy person at the community college one day. So folks have been there, but yeah, he was. He was like so fast, I couldn't keep up with him. Um, and Sherry Woodard has done a lot of volunteering too and the library staff. I cannot tell you, Sheila Kilabru has found ways for her library team to come and work with us, but they're doing it hit or miss here and not there. And Commissioner Yates, I think I understand what you're saying and I'd just like to say, as a Health Department Director, you know, we, we got overtime in twenty-twenty and then it stopped in January. And so we talked with our team about that it was going to be stopping and that we were going to just try our best to rotate people. So we didn't ask so much from them from their time away from their family, but we're in April almost now and the hours that our team is working is pretty substantial. Um, and again, if the heavy lift has fallen a lot on the upper management team, um, for these extra hours during the week and on Saturdays, it's pretty much everybody. I mean, last Saturday, I think we did fourteen hundred vaccines in one day. That was the school system event and that takes everybody that we've got and volunteers. And, you know, these people have young kids. I'm hearing, I'm seeing people video chat on breaks with their families at home and, I mean, every Saturday away is just a lot. So I want you to know, try to be really responsible and understand that the folks that work at the Health Department that signed up for an exempt position kind of knew what they were getting into, but we did not know it was going to be like this and so many Saturdays and so many long hours, so.
Well, the reason I ask, we got DSS and they've been through the same difficulties with COVID. Not quite as bad as y'all, but I mean, trying to deal with these children and the obstacles and, you know, again, how many hours do they put in? Management, you know, do we have the money for them? I mean, I sit on that board, so.
Not directly that went to DSS. You had the original round that went globally to the county and we've already, you know, submitted plans and made, we decided against bonuses, you know, because of exactly what you're talking about, not being able to be fair. This money was directly to them.
Okay, alright.
So once it's gone.
I gotta have that answer before I can vote yes for this.
Once that money's gone to your, there's not, you know, there's not, as far as I'm concerned, I mean, this board concerned, I mean, this board do what, you know, vote, do, do what they need to do. But then, then this stipulation starts to fade away. That's why we've always made it, we've brought to you kind of a term limit on it, try to get to June thirty and stop, because we don't exactly know when this money's going to carry over. There may be some left after June thirty that bleeds into July. I don't know yet. We just have to kind of play it by ear. And then, as you know, we're about to get additional funds soon. So I'm not sure what's going to happen from there, but this is one time for them.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, we don't have any clickers.
No, we don't. We can just do it verbally like y'all did, go into closed session.
Okay, okay.
Who's second?
How do you?
Yours. Yours. Okay.
Ready for vote?
Yes, yeah. So I have a motion. You had a motion. Do we have a second? I've got a second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think she's got that, yeah.
Okay. You gonna, you gonna call her, call her names? No? All in favor? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
That motion carries by a vote of five to zero.
I got one other quick question.
Yes, sir.
How many shots have y'all done total? Total?
I sent the update out tonight.
I think it's thirty-seven thousand.
Thirty-four thousand?
Thirty, thirty-nine.
Well, I don't know. You're going to lost it. Thirty-two thousand five hundred.
Yeah, we, we done a lot.
Lilian, we were one of the first in the state to, I know that a couple other counties has, but aren't we one of the first in the state to open it up to everybody now?
Yes, sir. And this is something, and, you know, so that I can tell y'all, and I've told our board, I tried really hard to get the state to do this. I've been trying for two weeks because I'm hearing from our community that people are confused about if they're eligible or not. They're like, I don't know. Am I eligible? Am I not eligible? And there are so many responsible, caring people in Davidson County that don't want to jump the line. I mean, the stories I could tell y'all about folks, I mean, people that have special needs, children that really need these vaccines and they're patiently waiting their turn. And then we just were getting calls from people who were so confused about their eligibility. So when this week I saw that we did not have all of our appointments booked, we made the decision to move to group five. We hope the state comes along with us soon because by us doing it first, so you hear it from me, we are attracting people from other counties, and we know that. But at the same time, we are also getting people in Davidson County who we're not going to be eligible to. But being the first, again, not to call out Chuck, but he shared a news article. It was shared in Charlotte, and people from Charlotte booked appointments to come here and get the vaccine. But everybody that gets vaccinated gets us one step closer to getting on the other side of this. So we're happy to do our part. And we've got a good system, y'all. We really do. It, we work people really quickly and get them through. And so we're glad to be able to do that.
You guys have pioneered some amazing work through this whole pandemic, and you're continuing to pioneer these, these things. So we expect nothing less of you at this point. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Going to closed session?
Second.
Motion, are we, are we moving to closed session?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Lilian, send me, I'd like to know, do we know how many vaccinations total countywide with private givers and all?
I could try to get that, but it's.
State website.
State should know.
The state website says how many Davidson County residents have been vaccinated, not.
I'd like to know.
Okay, but it doesn't mean we did it, and, and it doesn't reflect, because I looked at those numbers today myself, and I thought it was a little low, which shows me we're vaccinating people from outside the state. But I can get you that.
How many Davidson County, that's all I want to know. How many Davidson County, did you look at it today?
I did. It was under our number. It was twenty-eight. But see, I didn't know the, Commissioner Yates, I got to figure out the number, because it said something like twenty-eight thousand partially vaccinated. Then it said eleven thousand-ish fully vaccinated. And I didn't know if the twenty-eight thousand included the eleven. So.
Check that out and let me know. We, I'd like to know how many just.
They can confuse you. They will.
It's so much.
Lilian, I have a question too.
Yes, ma'am.
Are the Johnson and Johnson vaccines out yet?
So they're out. We had one Johnson and Johnson event in Davidson County. I had to ask for special, like, permission for those. They weren't automatically allocated like the others were. Asked for three hundred. I got three hundred. We did. Now we're just waiting for more. I have asked for more.
I have.
Yes, ma'am. I have asked for more, and hopefully it will become part of the regular allotment like we have, because a lot of people want it. And I'll tell y'all, when we start talking about vaccinating homeless and folks in the jail and home visit, people that are homebound, the one shot is really where we want to be.
I had a constituent call, and, you know, that's the thing about it is, when they call to make their appointment, can they ask for a type? No.
No. So we have what we have, and now we're about, now we're very clearly advertising what it is, because there's different criteria. Moderna and Johnson and Johnson, you have to be eighteen. Pfizer, you can be sixteen. And we're now, and we've been in the group now with frontline essential workers. We've been vaccinating sixteen and seventeen-year-olds.
So, so if I could just tell him when he does try, he needs to look.
It's, so we started doing it differently. This week and last week, we print a schedule, it's a little graphic that we have, and it says Tuesday, health department appointments, Pfizer. Wednesday, health department, Moderna. And so people know. But J and J, we're crossing our fingers. We get it soon, because we want to get those to the people that want it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, y'all. I really appreciate the overtime. My staff's going to really appreciate it, and thank y'all for everything y'all do.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Good night.
Second, can I close session?
Aye.
Steve's motion to amend the agenda.
Okay. May I have a motion to amend the agenda?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we amend the agenda.
Do I have a second? Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a...
First thing, Mike needs to do a report on close session.
Right.
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay.
He wasn't here, so...
He wasn't here, he can't.
I'd say no, uh, no action be taken.
Okay.
Staff was given their direction.
Staff was given direction to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Newby. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. May I have a motion to recommend, um, David Rickert as interim tax...
I'll make a motion that we accept David Rickert as interim tax director, Madam Chairman.
Okay, have a motion. Do I have a second?
Please.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.